Good afternoon. We would like to call this meeting into order. We will start off with our invocation by Pastor Chris Handley. Please stand.
Let's pray together. Lord God, it is good for us to pause. All of creation declares your glory. And so we desire to do that as well. Lord, we thank you for this city, for the way you've made it. We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for the celebrations that take place today in this room. We ask that you would help us to do what is right. Give us wisdom for these days and show us how to lead in a godly fashion. And then, Lord, we pray for this community. There are difficulties here. And we ask that you would guide us toward resolution to being able to...
Thank you, Council, and thank you, Council and citizens. We have before us approval amendments. What say you?
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Council, I do have three things that we want to move up on the agenda. We will have the appropriation of the taxes, the tax accommodation, city manager's report, and the resolution recognizing October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, if there is no objection.
Oh, buddy. I just wanted to say I've known the chief for 43 years. He is a dear friend. I did my best to aggravate him through the military when we were in there. And I'm gonna tell you one quick story that I'm gonna brag on him. We were at Fort Stewart, I think. And it was hot, and the tanks were coming in, and we were out in the middle of a dirt road directed traffic. The chief and I were out there, and I saw the colonel. They had a tent, a big tent set up, and I saw them leave. And I noticed there was a big cooler in there. I said, "I'm gonna go over there and get me a Gatorade," or whatever they got. So I snuck over there. I got me a Gatorade, and I was drinking it. And Alan said, "Tee, where'd you get that Gatorade?" I said, "My cooler over there." I said, "It's over there in that tent." By that time, Alan was in there getting their Gatorade. And the colonel, they pulled up, and they said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, that's CJ's." He said, "I don't know who he is. That's not his cooler. It's mine." All jokes aside, my friend, you've been one heck of a leader. One heck of a leader, and not only that, one heck of a friend. We've been through a lot together. We've cried together. We've laughed together. But the biggest, I can tell you what you represented your department with, with your leadership skills. I love you dearly. You've been a friend. And till the end, and I'm gonna try to get you to come to work with me now. You may not mind. But I love you, and I appreciate all you've done for this city. And I'm telling you, this man has set the tone for the next man, whoever you may go after. But he is a true leader. I love you, brother. Thank you.
We'll now have Mrs. Terrence Carraway to come forward.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to my friend, Chief Allen Hydler. And I have written words, so please forgive me. I wanted to make sure... He said, "Speak over," right?
Okay.
I wanted to make sure I got this to you. And everything in this, what I've written, is near and dear to my heart. Now, we're here to honor a man who has given 42 years of unwavering service to this department, this city, a lifetime marked with leadership, compassion, and integrity. Now, I met Chief Hydler. I don't know if you remember this. It's about 37, 38 years ago, when my husband, Terrence, was going through being a new hire. And back then, they had new hire training prior to going to the academy. So he was in a jumpsuit and everything, and I saw these cops. And I thought, on the motorcycles, and I said, "Ooh, chips." Can I meet them? He said, "Uh-uh. I'm not even there yet. I hadn't gone through the academy, so no." So eventually, I did get to meet all of the officers on the motorcycles. And they were pretty cool, but they were so staunch, straightforward, straight person. He gave me this nod, and I said, "So much for chips." Well, over the years, I come to understand that behind the straight face was a man of discipline, loyalty, and heart. And then, seven years ago, I saw that disciplined, straight-faced man fall to his knees in the hospital when I was told that my husband had been killed. Chief Hydler, you mourn the loss of my husband. I saw that it broke you almost as much as it broke me. That moment revealed in depth the compassion and love that I will never forget. I can honestly say that from that horrible day to this very day, you have been there for me and my family. As we walked to the relaying ceremony last Friday, just last Friday, I whispered to him and told him this would be the last time that we'd walk this walk together. He said, "I know, but I'm gonna definitely be here." That is who you are. That is who he is. He's that kind of man. He's that leader and friend that you've always been. Through every challenge, every success, and every moment that defined this department, you have led it with strength, humility, and grace. Since that tragic day in 2018, you have continued to be there for me, my family, and now the Terrence F. Carraway Foundation, 100%. In any event that we've had and any cause, you have stood with us. Your dedication went far above and beyond duty. It came from the heart. We thank you. I thank you for not only your decades of service, but for the warmth, for the humor, and the steadfast support you've given to me and my family. So you enjoy your well-deserved retirement, knowing that your legacy rides on with us. Maybe not on a motorcycle, but certainly in our hearts. Congratulations on your retirement.
For a guy who's not much about self-recognition, this was a little bit overwhelming. Thank you so much. I'm so very appreciative of everybody involved in this today. And my years of service here have been... The success has been, obviously, because of other people who have been just tremendous support for me. Have been tremendous people to work for. This city has been unbelievable to work for. Even during a time when equipment might not have been the best, things have certainly come a long way to now we're flying drones and drones to actual calls for service. We've seen the worst in humanity, and I've seen the best in them. But I think what I want to share most of all here today, again, I'm overwhelmed with gratitude, is that I appreciate everything that the city has done for me throughout this 42 years. I appreciate this council specifically for embracing the police department, as you have, holding us accountable when we need to be held accountable, but embracing us and understanding the needs that we need, have needed to get the job done. And you've been more than forthcoming with that. And I can't thank you enough, our mayor, and our council, and our city manager. I've got a zillion other words, but I probably won't put them in the right order because I'm completely overwhelmed with those. Thank you, and thank you to this wonderful community. I have so enjoyed serving this community, building relationships, building trusts in areas of this city that didn't have trust in the police. And thank you so much.
Well, we'll try to continue on after that emotional speech by our chief. Mayor gives me great pleasure. We're thrilled to recognize three of our very own.
Can you tell us about his other for the public? The other celebration for the public? Is that something for the public?
Yes. And I'll need to look. Is it Wednesday? Right here, we'll have, we'll recognize the chief Wednesday afternoon, about 12-ish. There, we will have the public, 1 o'clock here Wednesday, this Wednesday, 1 o'clock at City Council, in the City Council chambers. We will invite the public to come in and say farewell to our chief. We have a few more pictures also of him. Well, the chief served 42 years and certainly very seasoned. He was actually... These other three people weren't born. It was about seven years before. They were born seven years after he started working. So we're thrilled to recognize three of our very own council members who have been named among the 2025 Best and Brightest 35 and Under by the P.D. Business Magazine. This recognition highlights young leaders across South Carolina who are making a meaningful impact early in their careers. Councilman Chequaz McCall, Councilman Jay Lawrence Smith, and Councilman Zach McKay truly embody what this honor represents. Through their leadership, commitment to public service, and dedication to the Florence community, they continue to make a lasting difference in the lives of our residents and in the future of our city. We're extremely proud of their accomplishments and look forward to all that they continue to achieve in Florence and beyond. And that concludes my report.
Oh, I thought he was about to say something. Okay. Next, we will have Resolution Number 2025-34. It's a resolution to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You may now come forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Good to be with you, and I've got...
So wait a minute. Let's...
You want to do the resolution first?
Well, no, they've got to accept it. Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Now, it's all you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and I appreciate it. We have Alan McBride, who's the director of our Alternatives to Violence program, with us. Also, you've got a couple of pieces of paper that should have... The first is what we're doing in Florence for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And on the back is the invitation to the 30th anniversary of ATV. And I will tell you that it's the most effective prevention program on domestic violence that we have. So please consider attending.
Great, great, great. Amanda was going to read that, but I was gonna just let you finish, and then Amanda can finish, so...
Excellent.
Are you finished?
Almost.
Okay, so when she finishes, you...
So please consider that the keynote speaker is Dave Mandell, who trains internationally on Safe and Together. And we know that those that suffer the most with domestic violence is often child witnesses. So please consider coming and hearing Dave.
Okay. We kinda got a little twisted up. She normally reads first, but that's okay.
Resolution Number 2025-34, sponsored by Mayor Barnes. A resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Florence. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread and devastating issue that affects individuals and families in every community, regardless of age, gender, race, or socioeconomic status. And whereas the impacts of domestic violence extend beyond the immediate victim to impact children, extended family, workplaces, and the broader community. And whereas the PD Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Assault provides vital support, advocacy, and prevention services for survivors of domestic violence in the Florence community and throughout the PD region. And whereas raising awareness of domestic violence is essential to breaking the cycle of abuse, providing support for survivors, and ensuring access to critical resources. And whereas October is recognized nationally as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to unite individuals, organizations, and communities in a collective effort to end domestic violence. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Florence, South Carolina, does hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages residences, businesses, organizations, schools, and community groups to participate in efforts to increase awareness, promote prevention, and support survivors of domestic violence. Resolve this 13th day of October 2025.
Okay, so, Tee. Okay, so you were sergeant when we got started back in 1986. Just wanna thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. So this is on behalf of the PD Coalition. This is our crisis center at 220 South Irving, ATV over at 234 South Darden, the grandchildren center at 226 South Irving, and the emergency safe shelter. All right, let's see what's next.
Next on the agenda is Ordinance and Position. Bill Number 2025-38. It's the second reading. This is an ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026.
So move.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I have a quick question on the budget, real quick.
Yes.
And it might be something that can be discussed in the executive session. I had a quick question in regards to expenditures recently about sending our resources to Lake City as far as the trash pickup. Just wanna know where that was coming out of the budget and kind of honestly why we were doing something outside of our municipality itself. Again, there might be legalities around that. That could be discussed, but I did have a question in regards to where that was coming from.
The question that Councilman McKay raised is, I guess, last week or so, we were called by Lake City, the city of Lake City, in regards to trash pickup. They are having an issue with trash pickup, particularly for commercial trash there. I sent an email out to council. I met with the mayor about it. And we sent an email out saying that we would do a one-time assistance there. Our estimated cost was about $4,000 in manpower and in the cost of vehicles and dumping and all of that. We were able to do a couple loads. We sent two trucks and, I guess, two or three people down there to pick up commercial dumping that hadn't been dumped in what we assumed is a couple weeks there. So it was about $4,000 cost. We will be invoicing the city for that cost. The initial cost was $4,000. I think we'll get direct numbers or exact numbers here shortly.
And so with Lake City's financial position, as has been covered in the media here as of late, is that something that we do potentially see? And if not, are coming in? And if not, is that something that we would then in turn build to the county? Because that, Lake City does fall into county jurisdiction. However, they're nowhere near ours.
Well, the county is not necessarily responsible for that debt, nor, like all the other debts that Lake City has, the county, Florence County, is not responsible for those debts. As we've all read in the paper, there's been some discussions of the county lending Lake City some funding there. We will send the bill, and we'll hope we get those funds there. But we will send that bill to them.
Okay, so again, so we're not gonna look to the county to cover that cost in any way?
No, sir.
Is that something that in the future should be brought to council for the council's decision?
Well, we will. If we anticipate that's a one-time offering that we've given, I'm not necessarily... And we did that on a Saturday to ensure that the Florence residents were made whole. It wouldn't interrupt any of our services to our citizens there. They were in a desperate situation at that time, and we agreed to help a one-time. Anything else would certainly be brought forth to council.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next? Yes, we did. Okay. Introductions of Ordinance, Bill Number 2025-39. It's the first reading. An ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the City Code of Florence, City Code of the City of Florence to add Article 5 and provision related to relating improper use of public places and urban camping and other matters related there too. What say you?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by... Is there a discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We just wanted to introduce the, what's been commonly referred to as the Urban Camping Ordinance. This ordinance, a very similar ordinance, has been passed Columbia. I think North Memorial Beach has also passed this ordinance and a number of other municipalities within South Carolina. And what this is, is for... It allows for the city of Florence to manage the overuse of a public right-of-way or public place. So if we have the encumbering of a right-of-way, be it with your belongings or anything of that nature, we can assist those individuals to the facilities that provide help, but also allow for other users within the city of Florence to use those spaces without it impacting them. So this will apply to our public rights-of-way, our plazas downtown, and our park spaces as well.
Council, I didn't say that... Go ahead.
May I... I'm gonna make a motion to discuss in executive session to get legal guidance.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. This item is already listed to go in executive session. So, Council, if there's no... If you're okay with that, we'll move that to executive session.
Not on a legal instance, but how will we identify, like, the public spaces? What will be the definition of those?
Of the public space?
Yeah, how will we define that? Will it be all public space?
All public spaces.
All public spaces, okay.
Okay. All right. Next on executive sessions. And next on the agenda, Bill Number 2025-40. And it's the first reading. An ordinance to annex and zone RG3, the third phase of Smithfield subdivision, identified as tax Florence County tax map number 00100-01-384 to 00100-01-443 and 00100-01-093. What's...
So move. Second.
All right. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This property is located just off of West Palmetto, off of Smith Drive. And it is the third phase of the Smithfield subdivision. There was a development agreement in place. And as phases were built out of this subdivision, we've been annexing them phase by phase. And this is the third and final phase of this development. And it also includes the Storm Pond annexation as part of this. And outlined in red are the parcels affected. There's about approximately 60 lots within that subdivision. Here's a closer view. And Planning Commission did unanimously recommend the zoning of RG3 for this, and staff concurs. This ends the staff's report.
Question, Council?
This phase right here was 60 lots. What is the total?
Gosh, I think it's been about 60 for each one, so about 100, between 180 and 200 lots.
Okay. Okay. All right. If there are not any other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill Number 2025-41. It's the first reading. An ordinance to annex and zone NC-6.2. The parcel located at 922 West Sumter Street, identified as Florence County tax map number 90060-09-037. What say you?
So move. Second.
All those in... I'm sorry. Jerry, are you waiting for that one as well?
Sure, I can give you some information if you like.
Yeah, yeah, give me something.
This property is an infill lot. It's located on Sumter Street. It is currently vacant. It is currently vacant, so with, it does have a small accessory structure on the rear of it, so it would be brought in, you know, as a conformity, as an existing non-conformity, rather. But the property owner did wish to bring it in to potentially develop the site under city standards, and the recommended zoning for this site is NC 6.2. And this concludes staff's report.
All right. Councilman Fable?
Jerry, got a question for you about the, if you pull that map back up.
Sure.
So the area that's shaded is inside the city limits, and the area that's not shaded is not yet in the city limits. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is water and sewer available to those homes or potential homes, sites, the residential sites there that are not yet in the city?
It is available to this parcel, however, I would have to check on the others in this illustration to be sure. I'm not 100% without pulling up the actual maps and such, but I would say water and sewer is generally available in this area.
Okay, because it's surprising to a lot of people that here you have some property that's essentially right in the middle of town, you know, even though it's further out to the west down, you know, off of Donington and Sumter Streets, but they're not inside, these properties are not yet inside the city limits. They've been referred to over the years as donut holes.
That's right.
And I like that we're trying to fill these in, but I'm, I guess the curiosity is the availability of services, water and sewer, to those properties.
Yes, that's, that's correct, yes. Most of the, these properties within the infill areas do have water and sewer availability, so that's not an issue, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, we will have introductions of resolution. Resolution number 2025-30, this is a resolution to adopt the sewage sewer collection system master plan, council. We went over this, and it was, it came before us, we discussed, but we forgot to vote on it. So y'all, first and second, but we did not vote on it. So my question to the lawyer, do we do a motion again, or do we, we go through the whole process?
I will make a motion.
All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we move to resolution number 2025-35. It's a resolution to recognize, of recognition for Reverend Dr. Ralph W. Canty Sr., honoring his dedication, his dedicated service as one of the longest-serving pastors in the city of Florence County and, and the county. So we will let Amanda read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution number 2025-35, sponsored by Mayor Barnes. A resolution of recognition for Reverend Dr. Ralph W. Canty Sr., honoring his dedicated service as one of the longest-serving pastors in the Florence area. Whereas Dr. Ralph W. Canty Sr., a native of Sumter, South Carolina, has dedicated over 55 years of faithful service as pastor of Savannah Grove Baptist Church in Effingham, South Carolina, and whereas he is a devoted husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and a distinguished graduate of Morris College and Hood Theological Seminary with honorary doctorates from Morris and Benedict Colleges. And whereas, under his visionary leadership, Savannah Grove has grown spiritually and physically, establishing the area's first mass choir, launching a free tutoring program, Education Plus, completing a state-of-the-art sanctuary, constructing the Canty Center for Adult Care and Employment, and partnering with Florence County to create a public park on church grounds. And whereas, Dr. Canty has served in a key leadership role in the Progressive National Baptist Convention and the PD Baptist Convention while also supporting higher education institutions across the nation. And whereas, in recognition of his remarkable service, a portion of Alligator Road was renamed the Ralph W. Canty Senior Highway. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Florence, South Carolina, does hereby honor and celebrate Dr. Ralph W. Canty Sr. for his extraordinary leadership, lifelong service, and enduring legacy to the church, community, and beyond, resolved this 13th day of October, 2025.
Dr. Canty, would you come forth, please?
I'm ready.
Do I have a motion? So moved. All those in favor.
I didn't see him there. Chris Hanley gave us, gave me this idea three years ago.
Wow.
He was out.
I had a good idea.
He was a good idea, three years ago. And we have one other person in Florence that has served just about as long... How long has it been that you've been serving in Florence?
Fifty-six, 58 years in Florence County.
58 years.
the wonderful people of Florence, as I acknowledge God for His grace and His goodness, I acknowledge you for your love and appreciation. May God bless you all.
I should have recognized the family of Savannah Grove, but y'all stood up already. Yeah, so we're going to move on. Thank you all so much. You all are welcome to stay, but if, I know some of you had to leave, this would be a good time. Love you much. As they are leaving, I am sorry, did I not do the tax accommodation?
No.
I did not, and I moved that up.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Let's do it now, how about that?
That was Mr. Norwood's birthday present. Mess it up.
Yeah, counsel, if you don't mind, we will move the appropriation of accommodation tax fund for the fiscal year of 2025-26. Mr. Tim Norwood.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the accommodations tax proposal from the Accommodation Tax Committee. This year, we had 24 organizations request funds, we had, which the request totaled $1.399 million in requests. We funded 22 organizations for a total of $880,750 is the amount of money we had to spend, and we gave that through 22 organizations. And it's really kind of divided into sports tourism, arts, culture, convention, and quality of life festivals. So that's, we present that we provide these funds through the Accommodations Tax to the, all the organizations you have on here, the 22 organizations.
All right. What say you?
So moved.
Are we, because we are voting on this, right? There's a so moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it, it is passed.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is resolution number 2025-36. A resolution pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of Florence.
Second.
All those, oh, nope.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman McCall. The City of Florence pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body. The elected officials of the City Council enact this civility pledge to build a strong and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Florence. This pledge ensures all communication, both spoken and written, to be open, honest, and transparent, as this is vital for cultivating trust and relationships. This pledge ensures mutual respect to achieve municipal goals, recognizing that patience, tolerance, and civility are imperative to success. This pledge ensures opportunities for finding common ground and engaging in civil discussion to seek solutions while actively listening and thoughtfully participating. Adopted this 13th day of October, 2025, and it will be signed by all members of council.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we will have resolution number 2025-37. A resolution certifying building as, certifying buildings as abandoned buildings, site pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act, Section 12-67-100 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, as amended regarding the property located at 262 West Chevis Street, Florence County Tax Map Number 90087-01-015.
So moved.
Second. All those in... Clint, you, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution that when a developer is using abandoned building tax credits as part of their redevelopment, one of the steps in getting those tax credit is having the municipality or the local government, for that matter, to pass a resolution confirming that that building has been vacant for a minimum of five years. And I think we all know that building, and can, it's very easily seen that that building has been vacant for a large number of years. So this is just one step towards that process with their redevelopment. This concludes staff's report.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have resolution number 2025-38. Resolution to approve the conditional grant and development agreement located within the downtown redevelopment district for the development located at, can we just do that? This is another, yeah, another one, 2062 West Chevis Street. This item is for legal purposes, so if, if this is in executive session. Next, we have resolution number 2025-39. A resolution of conditional grant development agreement to provide an incentive for the development of new housing within East Florence as part of the ongoing neighborhood development project. Also, an item that will be taken up in executive session. Next, we have resolution number 2025-40. A resolution authorizing staff and the city attorney to utilize the eminent domain process to the extent necessary to require ownership of the property described on Exhibit A heretofore the public purpose of expansion of the existing fueling facility. This is also an item that will be taken...
We can't vote on this now.
If that is, that...
We're going to vote on this, then you got to get back here.
Y'all.
Turn it over to the council, you don't have to go to the executive session.
Okay, so, and I did want to have, I did want to ask a question.
Okay, that's fine.
So let me ask this question. I can ask this question. The fueling facility, is, when we do this, is it just, can it only be, or just green space, or, because I'm thinking fueling pumps out there for the road to see would not be aesthetically beautiful. So, so I wanted us to address, do we have to, can we approve it and then address that, or we need to discuss that before we approve it?
Madam Mayor, you sort of can adjust the language to say, you know, fueling facilities or other components pertinent thereto or related thereto.
Can we, can we change it to that so that it does not tie us? Because we, we don't want, we know that not much can be put there because of that drop-off, but the back of the property, I know we can do the fuel pumps, but we, we don't want that to be up front where people are driving past. So, so should we do this in executive session, or?
That may be appropriate.
Okay.
All right, I will grab my motion.
Okay, so...
Mayor, we will, city manager, our assistant city manager mentioned, we do have buffer requirements on that, but as you know, with eminent domain, it also has to be for a public purpose, so we'll maintain it as a public purpose in our discussions. We're talking about the fueling, but we will require something. We won't have it out there for the public to see. We'll have some plannings around it, something to...
To aesthetically unify it.
Right.
Okay.
And it requires buffers.
Okay. Okay, so, so we're going to, we'll, we'll do that in executive session. Next, we will move to, our reports to council will be done in executive session. The city manager has already gone, so now we will do the mayor's report. We did not, I'm sorry, appointment to the PDRTA Boards of Directors. We need to do that, Scotty. Is that executive session?
No, that doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Mayor, as you know, there's, the mayor has an appointment to the Board of Directors of PDRTA. That currently is Mayor Pro Tim Jabeley. They've sent a request to ask that he be reappointed to that board, and that's at the discretion of the mayor.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to reappoint Pro Tim Jabeley. We got to vote on it.
No, I think it's your...
It's just mine, no vote? Okay.
I just asked for, I think that's solely in your discretion, but if you want to maintain voting on it, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, well, no, I'm not going to start anything new. Okay.
Just wanted to recognize, Don Strickland from PDRTA is here, and we just asked Don to stand, and thank Don. He has worked diligently during this federal shutdown to keep the buses rolling, and it's taken quite an effort, Don, on your part and your whole staff. So on behalf of City Council, all of us in the city who rely so heavily on the work that you all... who rely so heavily on the work that you all do, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you so, so much. Next, we will have the mayor's report. I will start off with the hockey. The hockey this weekend was awesome. But I under, I, I went on Friday night, opening night. Florence called for hockey. They, when are we having a hot, getting this hockey team? Well, hockey is here, so please go out and support our PD Ice Cats. I had a wonderful time on Friday. I hear that it was on and popping on Saturday night. Councilman Smith told me that it was two fights. And so I missed it, but I, I do ask all of our citizens to please go out and support this team. We, we called for it and they answered, so please support them. Next, we had a dedication program that unveiled so many of the projects, the Oakland Project, that we are calling it, and we are just super excited. The community is very excited at the movement that is going on over there. The eminent domain we just voted on is one. We've got housing, the partnering with housing, and the tearing down of the apartments and rebuilding all new. The empowerment center that will happen across the street. Our amphitheater is up and finished, and it looks absolutely gorgeous. So I thank our staff for all of their hard work, and we will be sending vids out for the storm drainage at the first of the year. So we've got a lot of things going on. And there was a historic landmark placed by Francis Marion College. It was just a grand affair that we had. The community turned out very well. We, the, the following Saturday, we were supposed to have a march. And unfortunately, the weather did not allow us to have this march. But can I tell you, in the rain, people showed up. I had several phone calls, and that tells me that people are ready for some things to happen in our communities. And so I am super excited that the community is involved, because if the community is not involved, we then have a problem later on. They have to have a buy-in, and we are going to the community. So I'm just super excited about that. And I think that is it. Other than Wilson Homecoming is this weekend, and I just want to shout out to all my Tigers. Next, we'll have committee reports, Business Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Business Development Committee had a meeting on September the 18th. In attendance was Mayor, myself, along with Councilman McKay, Scotty Davis, and Clint Moore. We had a presentation that was very interesting, given to us by Andrew and Nicole Agha, is that, am I pronouncing that correctly? Yes, okay. They did the site work on the historical background where the Old Gamble Hotel was, where we're gonna have the new apartments coming for Urban Square. And it was very detailed. They were, they had all kinds of artifacts they found that they shared photographs of. And one of the exciting things, as I understand it, they're gonna be presenting some of those artifacts to the city so we can display them. There'll be some given to the museum for display. Some may even be inside the apartment building on display, and there'll be a big report that will be presented to us. And I think, Amanda, it's gonna be presented so that the city can upload it to the website, their historical report that they did, maybe in the form of a PowerPoint or something, I'm not sure. But once we receive that, we can get that to you. So it's good to know your history, good to know your, that, and they were, they actually went into great detail talking about how historic the city of Florence is in so many ways. And that was quite an update that they received from us. We also got a update from Mr. Moore on the Project Urban Square that the general contractor, Weaver Cook, is set to mobilize. And I believe, Clint, you'd mentioned that they've already turned the lights on on the warehouse building next door, and they'll be using that to operate out of, is that right? So, we're excited. Things are happening downtown, things are happening in our community. And unless there's anything else, Madam Mayor, I believe that should be our report, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we will have Community Development Committee. That is myself, Councilman Smith, and Councilman McCall. I pretty much said what the community committee was working on in my community. What, on what took place on last week and what will come up. I did not say that the rescheduling of our march will be November the 8th. It is, the next week, we couldn't do because it's Wilson Homecoming. The following week was a lot of different stuff with Halloween. The next week was Pecan Festival that we need to announce. Please get ready, it's time for us to go nuts.
November 1, Saturday, November 1.
November 1, and so that leaves us with only November the 8th that we will reschedule this. But that's all from me on the community redevelopment. Next, we will have our Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met on September 24th of last month, myself, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Braddock. At that meeting, we discussed the Accommodation Tax Budget, which was already presented today by Mr. Tim Norwood. But Chad Peterson, who is the Vice President of the, of that, of that board, came and presented to us, for which, again, they had $1.4 million in requests, and they were able to, they actually had less organizations apply this year. So they were able to give some of the organizations a little bit more money this year for a total of $880,750. We also had Mr. Walter Goldberg from First Tryon Advisors. He gave a presentation about the plan, the city of Florence plans for the set of bonds we will receive between now and November of 2025, and he answered questions that we had based on that. And additionally, there was a small discussion regarding the airport and its possible expansion, but we did table that to another meeting. And I think, from my understanding, I think that will probably be discussed in the Business Development Committee next time, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, and that is all that we have for that meeting. Unless I miss anything.
Great. Next, council, it is time for executive session. Executive session, we will, to receive legal advice on the Unauthorized Camping Ordinance Bill, B for Discussion of Economic Development Project as reference in Resolution Number 2025-38, C for Discussion of Economic Development Project in reference of Resolution Number 2025-39, E to receive legal advice on eminent domain process relating to Resolution Number 2025-40, F for the discussion regarding appointments to city boards and commissions, G to receive information on economic development projects for property located in downtown overlay district, H to receive legal advice regarding a potential lawsuit, I to receive an update on an ongoing economic development project, and I for personnel matters. What say ye? Second. We can all, well, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. We can take a five-minute break before executive session. All right, you ready? We call this meeting into session. We have now entered, back into session from executive session.
Second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What I was about to say is, we did not vote on anything in executive session, but we are now here to continue. We will move this next one to, let's see where we are. I'm losing one. Let's go to Resolution Number 2025-38. It's a resolution to approve a conditional grant agreement within the downtown redevelopment district for development located at 262 West Cheviere Street. What say ye?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-39. It's a resolution and conditional grant development agreement to provide incentives for the development of new housing within East Florence as a part of the ongoing neighborhood redevelopment project. What say ye?
So moved.
Second.
All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next, we have a Resolution Number 2025-40. A resolution authorizing staff and city attorney to utilize the eminent domain process to extend necessary, to acquire ownership of the property described on Exhibit A heretofore for public purpose and expansion of existing fueling facility. What say ye? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And there is one other one. What was that? Where are we?
Camping ordinance.
The Camping Ordinance, 39, okay? We are, Bill Number 2025-39, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the City Codes of Florence, City of Florence to add Article 5 and provision related to relate, related and regulating improper use of public place in urban camping and other matters thereto. What say ye?
Madam Mayor, I think if I'm not mistaken, I made that motion to approve, and there was seconded already. I would like to amend my motion at this time.
Okay.
And I would like to amend the motion, the prior motion to approve first reading to provide that the city manager shall meet with the No One Left Unsheltered Committee and that group, and that the city manager conduct a study that shall address education, service needs, and enforcement matters as it pertains to the homeless population, along with the inclusion of homeless court as an option to address potential infractions under the ordinance. And I further move that, following this review, the ordinance will then be placed on the December agenda for consideration of second reading.
Okay, that is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, and now we have to vote on the amended version.
Correct.
So is there a motion on the amended version? So now we second to the amendment version, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Now we are voting on the amended version. What say ye? There's, there is. I can go on?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Now we will have committee report, no, I'm sorry. Now we will have boards and commissions by the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. First, I have the Boards and Commissions Accommodations Tax Advisory Board. They had a one-year average chance of not qualified for 66 in the lodging industry. Florence to make nominations is Pro Tim Jabeley.
Second is Councilman McKay.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Jennifer Hunt.
Chin, to make a nomination is Councilman McKay. Seeking reappointment is Ms. Thomasina Foster, and we do have four others.
Yes, I was gonna appoint Ross McMillan.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Next, we have Resilience and Sustainability Advisory Board. There are no applicants. Making appointment is Councilman Smith.
Defer.
Finally, we have the Public Safety Citizens Review Board. Must be 21. We have two, five applicants seeking to make nomination is Councilman McKay. That concludes staff report.
Thank you so much. We have now come to the end of our meeting. What say ye? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.